I assumed all like these were horrible lessons to say.
Greg, you all right?
Ready to roll.
But you're getting out. Rick will hit the mics.
Yep. All right. We're going to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, November 20th, 2023.
This mic's not on.
All right, let's try that again. We're going to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, November 20th, 2023. We're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. We do have a special guest that is going to do the pledge of allegiance for us. He's going to step up to the podium right over here by our American flag. His name is Owen Mathis. He is the son of our Parks and Rec director, Mike Mathis. So we're going to let Owen start this. Mike, did you want to just bring the microphone down towards him so he can get that in there? There you go. Perfect. All right, your show.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for the stands one nation under God and the beautiful, perfect, and justice.
Nice job, Owen. That's pretty good. Uh, Mike, how old is Owen? Five years old. Nice job. That's pretty brave to come up there in front of the microphone and have that memorized. Nice work.
Great kid.
Yes, absolutely. Anyone else wants to do that, feel free to contact the city manager's office at 793-5532. And they can get you set up with that. I think we may have a date available yet in December. Otherwise, January, February, March are probably all open. Uh, roll call, Amanda. Here. Here. Uh, Scott did make arrangements with the city manager and myself saying he wouldn't be here, so he is excused. He is not going to join us from a remote location either. So we can skip over number four and go right to number five. Uh, number five is a public hearing. It is an ordinance to amend municipal code section 10-1-20, section I six dwelling to expand the listing of roofing materials permitted. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Um, this is a public hearing, but we can get some background on that. Do we want Elizabeth on that?
You want to speak to that?
Hi, everyone. Um, this item was brought to our attention because there was questions about what type of materials were allowed for roofing as well as some requests to modify what is allowed for dwellings and buildings within the city. So the plan commission evaluated this over a few meetings to modify the ordinance and single out some materials and then expand upon that language within the code to make it more clear as to what is allowed and how it should be implemented within the code to the extent possible to modify that language. So as you can see within your packets, how the language is presented and it is identified in section I and then expanded under six, parent, and parentheses, section six, how the metal roof is allowed. Metal shingles and standing seam metal roofs are allowed, but the corrugated component is not. And for those of you who are not clear as to what corrugated is, it's that wavy part of a roof that is not. But we do, um, we did discuss a lot with the plant commission that metal roofing is allowed and metal shingles and standing seam metal roofs, but the corrugated part was, was not something that the plant commission was going to support. Any, any questions for me?
I think there are because I think during that same meeting under C, I think we were allowing exposed fasteners because we do that on our own buildings. And I know that was a topic of discussion for sure that we were to allow those.
Oh, you're right. Okay.
Especially for people that do ice and snow blocks. I know that makes it a lot easier.
My apologies. That's right. So in the end, the exposed fasteners were going to be allowed. So, um.
And I think that pretty much goes to letter C.
So, yes, that would have to be then stricken.
Uh, was there anything else? I know some council members were talking. I don't know if that was the only one that was there. Tim? Oh, good time for that, right?
Okay.
Uh, well, we can, while you're looking for that, we can certainly open up the public hearing and we can have Elizabeth come back up here. Darla, did you have something?
Yeah, my, my primary question was going to be about the exposed fasteners, but I'm glad to hear that those are going to be allowed. One thing I'm, I have a question about is the ice and snow blocks or shields. I know that the metal roofing is much lighter than traditional, um, shingles or, you know, and one of the nice things about the metal roof is that the snow can move off and drop off of the, the roofs. Why is it necessary to have these shields?
I don't think it's necessary that you have to have them. It's an option that you can choose to have them.
No, and here it says.
This is not, if I could, Darla, I would just add that this is not mandating or requiring the ice and snow blocks. Um, so if, if I would just say that item C would just be incomplete, the complete language there would be removed and it would just be permitting.
C is gone altogether. That's what we just discussed.
Oh, okay.
Yep, C, C will be stricken.
So, but the other items. Yeah.
It's, we, we did not mandate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that's staff. That's me. I should have removed that. Yeah, so thank you. That was a good catch.
With that, I take it we would not regulate.
There.
There you go. Uh, we wouldn't reg, we likewise don't regulate the material of those. A lot of the snow stops are plastic that you see, uh, you know, fastened to the road. And they're really good if you don't want to get a whole lot of snow on you if you slam the front door too hard. It all comes down.
Good idea to probably have them, I would imagine.
Yes.
I wouldn't want them if I had that, but it's not something that we are mandating.
Right.
Another discretion. That's good.
Yep.
Yes, Jeff.
Um, for the corrugated, it's not having that now. What exactly is corrugated?
A lot of pole buildings are built out of, is, is that considered corrugated or not?
Pictures that we were showing was real wavy. Yes, it was, it was round versus any type.
You know what I mean? They're both.
Yep, nope. That, that would be allowed. It's the real wavy ones that kind of went like this. Yep, okay.
Anything else for Elizabeth while she's up there? Okay. All right, uh, opening up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak solely on this topic, please step up to the podium. My right, your left, state your name and address for the record. We will have three calls for the public hearing. Opening up call number one.
Hello, um, my name is Jim Bob Scut and I reside at 1800 Jefferson Street, apartment number 206 right here in Two Rivers, Wisconsin. Uh, I have a, I'm not going to be talking solely on this topic, but, um, uh, is it okay if I talk about something else?
We will have input from the public coming up right after this. So the public hearing is just going to be solely on this topic.
Okay.
So if you've got something else, we will get to you right after this.
Okay.
Okay, we are going to close call number one, open up call number two. Closing call two and opening up the third and final call on the public hearing. All right, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to city council, looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance with deleting C out of page four, which goes to the exposed fasteners or standing seam roof design that employ exposed metal fasteners are prohibited. Ice and snow blocks or shields must employ concealed fasteners. That part will be deleted. Thank you, Jeff, seconded by Darla. Any council discussion? Okay, yep, yep. If you flip over page five, it's not in red, but it would also be deleted on that C as well. So C will just pretty much be gone altogether. Yeah, if you flip over to page five, you'll see C again. Okay, any other council discussion? See none, roll call vote, Amanda.
Aye.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Peters.
Aye.
Fashimotis.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. On to number six, which is input from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council on something that's on this agenda, something they'd like to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium, my right and your left, and just state your name and address for the record. Uh, input from the public is open.
Hello, I'm Jim Bob Scut. Uh, uh, I live here in Two Rivers at 1800 Jefferson Street, apartment number 206. Uh, I, I know that, I understand that like riding bicycles in town, um, that is not like on a bridge and as long as a person is above the age of 12, they cannot ride bicycles on the sidewalk. Um, they have to ride their bicycles in the street. I've been, I've encountered numerous of times where I, I'm, I'm walking on kind of by 17th Street, kind of headed towards 18th Street, where I've no, I've noticed, uh, older, older people are riding their bicycle on the sidewalk. And, uh, and I know, I know that law enforcement is supposed to kind of, you know, uh, kind of like, you know, tell those people to kind of get off, you know, get back in the street, you know, in the street so that, you know, that they don't get hit by, you know, pedestrians, you know, people walking on the sidewalk don't get hit by bicycles. Cause a lot of times people ride bicycles don't have dingers and stuff like that and they don't notify that they're coming up behind you and it just kind of would make me feel more comfortable if I knew I could walk on the sidewalk without risk of having you know, you know, another adult riding around on the, on the sidewalk with the bicycle, considering they can move at like 35, you know, miles an hour if they're really tracking. Thank you.
That, that, go ahead. That is in the ordinance that they are not to ride bikes on the sidewalk except for over bridges and parts of Riverside, I believe it is. Is the only other exception to that when they can ride on these sidewalks. Um, I know the chief and his staff take that pretty seriously, but again, that's got to be something that they're going to drive by and see. Of course, if you have those problems continuously, maybe reach out to the police department and they'll be happy to assist you and hopefully send some extra patrols in that area to uh, try to deter that. And they do do a pretty good job of when they see that stopping, making them get back on the street and, um, telling them of the ordinance that we have. Um, Greg, do you have anything else on that?
I think I heard you say it, but I just wanted to make sure. Our ordinance does specifically allow for people, for bicyclists without regard to age to operate bicycles on bridge sidewalks.
Bridge and parts of Riverside.
Right. And that, was that the basis of your complaint? Not so much generally on the sidewalks or? Oh, okay. I, I misunderstood then. Right.
Okay.
Yep, because that potential for conflict on bridges is there because the ordinance allows.
We do allow that on bridges and chief's in back, he's hearing this, so he'll make sure that his staff is reminded, uh, anyone that is not in those areas and under the age of 12, to make sure that we get them back on the streets, not on the sidewalks. Thank you, Jim, for that. Anybody else? Input from the public?
All right, see none. We're going to move on to number seven, which is council communications. Any letters or other communications from citizens anyone would like to share? Tracy.
Yes, I did hear from a citizen that is suggesting that we look into getting rid of spectrum contract altogether and using that money towards something else.
Okay, I think we have some news hopefully coming up on that, uh, tonight as part of Greg's report.
Yeah, we have an update on that.
So we will see where that, see where that goes. But thank you. Anybody else? Council communications, Jeff.
I got a couple complaints from people about audio. A lot of times they can't hear people.
It's what?
A lot of times they can't hear the people.
Okay.
A lot of it, I think it's on our part too.
Us not speaking into the microphones maybe clearly?
Right.
Okay.
Yep. And then I did get a couple of phone calls about spectrum that they did not want it to just go away. And in those same conversations, they said that that horrible, or the newspaper idea, they said, who wants to find out what's happening in the city a week after it happens? They said absolutely no to that.
Yeah, I think we're more trying to get the information out as we see it, um, and as it's happening. I think we should have some fairly decent news coming here, uh, from Spectrum as part of the city manager's report. So hopefully we'll have some good news to report on that.
Right, yeah, and then I did talk to a couple of them. Well, they were pretty much like the same five people that didn't contact me the whole time, but then they weren't completely opposed to the radio idea neither. They said that is better than nothing.
Yeah, if the, if the spectrum thing doesn't go through, which it sounds like things are going on the right path right now, um, that would be another way of getting it out there as, as it happens. Is that it?
I know I forgot some, but it's all right.
Okay.
Maybe one before the end.
It's all right. Anybody else? Council communications. All right, see none. Council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything they'd like to report on? Darla?
Okay, with the environmental advisory board, we meet tomorrow evening and, um, Mike Mathis, who is the director of our Parks and Rec, um, is going to be a guest speaker. And he's going to discuss the status of the current park projects, plus the possibilities for Washington Park and/or paddler's park. And I know I've talked to him about using paddler's park more, so stay tuned on that. Chief Murak has been gracious enough to, um, offer the, the fire department's vegetable garden, which is behind the fire station. And, uh, the thought is to, or to enlarge it. And, uh, I'm not sure exactly what we would do with it, but the, the, the land is there. And if we were to have like a, a small little community garden with some, um, examples of green infrastructure, that's one of the things that we might do. But EAB needs to talk more on that and, uh, talk with the chief. We're still waiting to hear back from the DNR on the TMDL. That's pretty important. We'll know what direction to take once we get that back. I don't have an update on AB 457, the Wisconsin Vegetable Garden Protection Act. Perhaps we'll have something at our next meeting. And, you know, I mean, we're ongoing is work with Woodland Dunes more, um, watch for opportunities to show green infrastructure. Um, right now we are looking for grants, um, to help us. And so basically it's on the, we've just made strides in what we've been talking about already. And then, um, with Main Street Design Committee, right now, um, Jason Pretty, who we've been discussing murals with, has started doing renderings that we can approach, uh, building owners with so they can see what their building might potentially look like. We've, um, we've found several locations that would lend themselves to murals. Um, we just want to have those, those renderings done and talk to the building owners and see if we can get something going. We've been talking about the Art and Artisan Goods Festival, and I've been talking to the city as well, so this maybe might be a collaboration between Main Street and the city. But basically it would be, um, the Manitowoc Symphony. We would have art out there that people can take a look at. And then artisan goods, um, we would like to get some local artisans who have a little bit more serious, um, art and crafts that they do. The sign and facade grant, we got a lot going on with that. I'm not ready to talk about it. And then the holiday parade, the light up downtown, which is next Saturday. Be out there. It's going to be pretty nice because, um, it's really, the whole street is going to be very well lit. And one of the things that we asked the float builders to do, or whoever's driving vehicles, was to add on some, some lights onto, onto their things that they're, that are going to go down the street. So I think it's really going to make itself, um, a real, I don't want to say spectacle, but, um, just a wonderful event, something that's been, you know, better than in the past. And that's pretty much about it.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else? Anything to report on? Jeff?
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else? Anything to report on? Jeff?
We just finished up the budget and, uh, we'll be having a public hearing on it next Thursday or next Monday. That's about it.
Anybody else? Boards, commissions and committees. All right, seeing none. Greg, you're up. City managers report.
Didn't have a specific listing on the agenda, but would like to have Mike Mathis come forward to introduce our newest year-round part-time employee at Parks and Rec.
Good evening, everyone. Um, happy to introduce, uh, AJ Lorgan to all of you. Uh, the Community House, the Parks and Rec team, uh, has been seeing, uh, a lot more, uh, activities going on, a lot of more participation, all of our programs. Um, pre-COVID, there was a number of, we had additional support staff, administrative type staff, uh, to help with the, all the workload that goes on there. And so as we've been seeing this increased workload, we want to make sure our customer service is staying really top-notch and getting people in the programs and, uh, supporting rentals and special events and all the amazing things that are going on in town. So we were able to, uh, uh, add, uh, a part-time year-round position here. Uh, that AJ is filling for us, he's a Community House receptionist, so he's going to be support there at the front desk as well. Um, AJ, uh, has a, a degree from Lakeland College in graphic design, so super good skills there to help us out with our program guides and figure out some marketing things. Um, he is, uh, really into the, uh, baseball community in the area, so a great fit recreationally for some of the things we're doing. He manages the Shoreland Baseball League, uh, and in past has done, uh, worked with the Branch Blaze Amateur Baseball as well, managing and really starting those leagues and, uh, coordinating all those efforts. So right on point for what we're looking for in the Parks and Rec Department. Also the JV, uh, coach right over at Manitowoc, uh, Lutheran High School for Baseball, uh, has spent time at, working for Main Street as the office assistant in the visitor center there. And some time over at, uh, Hamilton Wood Type Museum. So we couldn't have gotten somebody, uh, better really to kind of fit this role to help us out and be connected with the community and be the, the face of our team, uh, at the Community House. So, yeah, welcome to AJ. And, and it is impressive that he's been doing all of this with, uh, one hand so far.
Okay, by way of further update, uh, as you're aware, we've been recruiting for the tourism director position. Today is the deadline, at least to assure, to be assured of consideration of your application. We'll be sharing those, uh, as staff with a couple of representatives from the Room Tax Commission and also the Chair and Vice Chair of Explore Two Rivers have agreed to participate in that initial screening and interview process. So stay tuned on that one. Uh, we are still, uh, thank Amanda, we're still doing recruitment for the line worker position, uh, for the electric utility. Uh, pleased to report among our recent hires, Justin Jackson, you met him previously before he went off to academy at NWTC. Uh, chief and other representatives of the department were up there a couple of weeks back. Uh, pleased to say that Justin was honored by his peers with the backup officer award for this graduating class. That basically being who out of this group would you most want to have backing you up in a difficult situation? And, uh, that's from his peers. Uh, Craig Freilich has started in the capacity of part-time building inspector. Uh, he is getting scheduled for his certification exam, has a background in CAD and building design. So at this point is working, um, in tandem with, uh, with Jane, our building inspector, who, um, still is going to be assisting us at least through the end of the year, Jane Drager. So, uh, hopefully a succession plan, uh, in place there. On the budget, uh, Jeff mentioned already, the personal finance committee completed their review on November ninth. I'm sorry, not the nineteenth. Uh, public hearing, six o'clock next Monday here at the front end of the city council work session. We anticipate final council action on Monday, December four for the two thousand twenty-four budget. Update on tourism and room tax, uh, matters last week. Both the Explore Two Rivers Board and the Room Tax Commission met, uh, on Tuesday morning of last week. This is just the month-by-month breakout of room tax revenues. You can see through, uh, for the collection months through September. We don't have October because hotels motels have until the end of November to get their October payment in. But we are at two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. If you look at the little January to September box at the bottom, you'll see we're running well ahead of any prior year. And man, that really shows the progress we've seen as far as visitor activity and, and spending dollars with room tax collections. So right now, based on prior year's experience, we're projecting that room tax revenues, uh, will be in the neighborhood of, uh, two hundred thirty, I'm sorry, three hundred thirty thousand dollars, uh, for this year. And if, if they come in at that, that would be a ten percent increase of last year's two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. So that trend, uh, continued very, very positive. And, uh, the Room Tax Commission did, um, vote to adopt a proposed twenty twenty-four budget last year, reflecting that three hundred thirty thousand dollar projection and a similar number for next year, uh, including, uh, funding for the full-time director position, seventy thousand dollars in marketing funding available to Explore Two Rivers, twenty thousand for special projects or initiatives that might be identified by the Room Tax Commission and Explore Two Rivers. Also, um, continued funding for Main Street's visitor information function downtown at twelve thousand dollars. Visitor information activities at Washington House continued at three thousand dollars in assistance to the historical society. Um, they also did, uh, uh, agree to fund in the Room Tax Commission budget, a thirty thousand dollar capital investment that we've talked about previously for a, um, uh, advisory system, a, a digital, digital sign beach advisory system that would have a direct tie into the National Weather Service and could advise beachgoers of any beach advisories or a beach hazard warnings with sign installations at Neshota Beach and the, the so-called New Beach by the North Pier. So that, uh, that is something that the Room Tax Commission is willing to pick up, given the importance of the beach as one of our attractions. Uh, we just remind people, the winter parking ban, uh, does begin December one and runs through March fifteen. We expect that as in recent years, the Police Department, Public Works Department and City Manager's Office will coordinate efforts to waive or suspend parking ban enforcement whenever conditions permit. I don't think we had the actual ban in, being enforced more than ten days last winter. So hopefully with a little cooperation from Mother Nature and maybe an El Nino thrown in, we can continue that. I still kind of like that we have the ban as the backup, so, you know, there's no question, oh, it snowed, I get a ticket. Well, what did you think? There's a ban. But, uh, again, this seems to have worked out pretty well in recent years. And also a reminder here, uh, because win- winter may arrive at some point here. Uh, there is a requirement for removal of snow and ice from public sidewalks adjacent to any property within twenty-four hours after the snow ceases to fall. And for corner lots, that includes those ramps down to the edge of the gutter. Uh, and if the snow and ice does not remove property properly, excuse me, the city can go out with our forces and remove it. And then the owner is billed for the cost of that removal and then for the second and any subsequent violations at the same property with any, within any November one to April thirty period. Uh, for the second and subsequent violations, uh, the property owner can be subject to a fine of a hundred fifty dollars plus court costs as well as the cost of cleaning the snow up. This is not meant to be a revenue item for the city. Quite honestly, we just want voluntary compliance. Uh, Two Rivers is a very walkable community and we want to keep it safe and walkable in the winter. Uh, also related, uh, we just remind folks of the municipal code prohibition on blowing or otherwise depositing snow or ice in the street. And you see this happen all the time in the wintertime. There goes the big arc of snow out of the snow blower into the street traffic lane. That, uh, is a violation and offenders may be subject to fines. So we remind people of that.
Is that different where we wouldn't roll?
They can push their side, they can clear their sidewalks into the street in the downtown area. That's true. Yes. Um, leaf collection will wrap up next week, the week of the twenty-seventh to December first. For the last week of collection, crews will go back to what I'll call the old rotation. East side on Monday between the rivers, Tuesday through, boy, this is bad PowerPoint and I did that. Wednesday through Thursday and south side on Friday. But if you live in one of those areas, have your leaves out by six AM on that first day. If you're on the east side on the twenty-seventh, have them out by six AM that morning. Cause crews aren't going to come back once they make a pass through. If you're between the rivers, want to be confident they'll be picked up, relatively confident. Uh, have them out before six o'clock AM on Tuesday. South side, better be out by six AM on Friday. So that, they'll be picking up there. So with that slide corrected, we'll be getting that word out this week. Next week, the week of the twenty-seventh, final week for leaf pickup. Uh, status report, um, Central Park Ice Skating Rink, I, I expect many of you have seen it. A, it's beautiful. B, thank you, uh, by the way, again, Two Rivers Rotary for the generous naming donation of sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, B, kudos to our city parks crews for a great job doing the installation. And C, it's getting a lot of use. I, I didn't try to, uh, link to a video because I usually screw up. But if you've seen the Facebook post from Friday, uh, with the young man Brayden who was skating out here, he's, he's a pretty accomplished skater and a hockey player. That's gotten over sixty thousand views out on Facebook. A lot of positive feedback. Uh, Mike Mathis reported that on Saturday during the skate rental period, there were thirty-one rentals and probably a similar number of people that brought their own skates, uh, and enjoyed the ice. So the feedback has been very, very positive on the park. It's, uh, yeah, as some have said, it's kind of a Norman Rockwell thing when you go by and, and see that going on. Again, skate rentals, current schedule is Saturdays during the skating season from noon to, yeah, uh, there will not be skating, there won't be skate rentals this coming Saturday. But after Thanksgiving weekend, they'll resume every Saturday until it's determined the skating season ends. Again, this isn't meant to be up year-round. Somebody had asked on Facebook, well, how are we going to use the splash pad? Again, we weren't anticipating folks would skate year-round, but this gives us an extended assured skating season. And it would have been mighty hard to have maintained ice this past weekend at forty-five degrees. So, um, just, uh, looking to see a lot more use of that facility. Uh, also would remind you about the Parks and Rec, uh, Park and Open Space Survey. It's out there. I believe it will remain out there till January first, Mike. And, uh, we encouraged, if you haven't yet, go out, uh, using that Survey Monkey le- leak, leak, link and, uh, and provide some feedback. Advisory rec board and staff much appreciate that. Uh, we also remind folks that Main Street's Shop Hometown, uh, promotion in, in tandem with the national promotion to shop small is on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, this coming Saturday. Uh, stop by the Main Street office and at sixteen oh eight Washington, you can get a goodie bag. Some of those goodie bags will include Cool City Cash certificates that you can spend downtown. Uh, enjoy downtown, stop and grab something to eat, something to drink, enjoy the things that you cannot buy on Amazon. Uh, just a little joy and interpersonal, uh, interactions for the Christmas season. Uh, the parade was mentioned earlier, the Hometown Christmas Parade, brought to you by Two Rivers Main Street's Parade of Lights this year, uh, is at five thirty on Saturday night, November twenty-fifth. Council is entered, your entry number twenty-two, which puts you right about midway out of forty-five units in the parade. Just for point of reference, you'll be right behind the Boy Scout troops, which is a whole lot better than being behind the horses. And, um, parade is at five thirty, but please be there no later than five fifteen. Five o'clock would be good to shoot for, but no later than five fifteen. We will have a decorated city truck and a banner that some of you can carry again, identifying the city council as one of the entries in the parade. We will be sure to get a reminder out probably Friday night or Saturday morning, again, with where do you gather, what time? And, um, it is allowed to bring candy and toss it if you want. Some of those kids have learned that Bonnie has a really strong arm. But, uh, nobody's been too seriously injured, but we give her a hard time about that every year. Sometimes they throw it back. It gets a little, it's a little dicey then when that happens. But again, uh, thank you to Main Street and thanks to all the businesses like Darla mentioned. Folks have really answered the call to light up their businesses. Take a look at Central Park downtown too. Some new lights have been added there. So, uh, Christmas in the Cool City. Speaking of Cool City Christmas, another event which is really, uh, born out of efforts of Parks and Rec, the City Manager's Office specifically, Lisa Keen in my office has done a lot of work on this. Two Rivers Rotary, Washington House, Main Street and Friends of the Senior Center. That's Cool City Christmas, three weeks out from this weekend, Saturday, the sixteenth, noon to six PM in downtown. They'll be ice skating, including skate rental at the Rotary Rink in Central Park. Holiday craft making, both Two Rivers Rotary, uh, which will be doing, um, an ornament, uh, ornament workshop. And Lowe's Home Improvement, which will have staff members here assisting kids with a craft item. Both of those activities and Santa's workshop is occurring down in the Behringer Room on the lower level of the Community House. Uh, pictures with Santa, his elves and yes, honest to goodness, live reindeer, uh, will be available. That's at no charge and that's courtesy of financial assistance from the Friends of the Senior Center, very generous donation for the event. If the weather permits, Santa, elves and reindeer and Mrs. Claus, if she makes it in from the pole, will be on the stage at Central Park. Otherwise, if the weather's really bad, uh, we'll move them inside. Uh, Parks and Rec has their annual can, candy cane hunt. There's a vendor fair and Lisa told me this morning, we now number forty vendors. The gym and lobby at the Community House are full and she was going over to scope out the lobby area outside the Behringer Room for maybe six or eight more vendors. So there's been a phenomenal response. Uh, there are concessions going to be offered. FBLA will there, be there selling hot dogs and soda. They'll have a gift wrap table that can help with gift wrapping. And we anticipate having some of the high school choir and possibly some other carolers downtown. Activities over at Washington House, activities at the Community House and in the park. Special promotions downtown, for example, Crafty Cravings has got some nice specials out that are tied, uh, to the event. And there you have one on, uh, the Future Business Leaders Group from the high school and what they'll be doing. So you know, it's, a- again, um, with so much online shopping and the demise of the shopping malls that sucked us all in in the old days. Um, there are still those opportunities to shop and get personal service downtown and to get out and just enjoy the holidays with your neighbors. So we hope Cool City Christmas, uh, becomes an annual tradition because there's quite a bit of time between Thanksgiving and Christmas to get out and enjoy.
Very nicely done.
Yeah, so we're pretty excited about it. Uh, Coffee with a Cop is back. Uh, Chief Miner and, and his crew felt again, post-COVID now, it's very important to get back out and hear directly from people in the community. Uh, every Monday through, gosh, uh, into February here, we show, um, uh, rotating among three local coffee shops, Strader's Red Bank, Cool City Brewing and the High Lift. They were over at Cool City this morning, next Monday, the twenty-seventh, PD at the High Lift. You see the other dates there. Not every week, but, uh, again, with pretty good frequency, uh, from now through February. And, uh, Chief, do you have any other comments on that? You've got a couple of them under your belt now since we resumed.
Yeah, too, maybe another coffee shop coming aboard, but hopefully getting some more interest and we'll see how long we can go.
And, and like the, the post notes, it's not about an agenda or speeches, it's really a chance to ask questions and engage with people in the community. Uh, Community Thanksgiving Meal over at the Senior Center is on Thanksgiving Day from eleven thirty to two thirty. Uh, they're still looking for volunteers and, uh, likewise, if you're interested in attending, contact, uh, the Senior Center, seven nine three five five nine seven. Um, Spectrum Cable, yes, uh, reached out late last week to our IT and I to advise that the public access channel should again be operational by December twelve. We'll call that a gift to, uh, we'll call that a gift to the Spectrum subscribers here in Two Rivers that have been pretty patient. Uh, by the way, the city has a contract with Spectrum. We, we have not yet paid them. I suggested to Rick, maybe we could pay the bill as fast as, as they were able to get the channel up. But this does mean if it holds true, that, uh, we'd be able to resume broadcasting council meetings on local cab, cable channel nine ninety-three, charter nine ninety-three, starting with the December eighteen council meeting. So four weeks from tonight. If not, all heck is going to break loose. Yes. If not, maybe we'll go back to rabbit ears like that, uh, TV on the right-hand side. Uh, PFAS litigation, uh, I did not include that on tonight's agenda, but we've had a couple of meetings now mentioned. Uh, the two-class action lawsuits, one involving Three M Corporation and the other DuPont Corporation. Uh, municipalities, uh, that, uh, uh, provide municipal water from water sources that have been shown to be impacted by PFAS are eligible to. that have been shown to be impacted by PFAS are eligible to participate in these settlements. We draw our water from Lake Michigan, and yes, sampling of Lake Michigan, including our raw water from Lake Michigan, has shown levels of PFAS well below action levels suggested. But this, this is a big deal, because if you participate in the settlement, yes, it means some cash for the city's use, but it also takes those very large companies off the hook in terms of certain rights the city might have in the future relative to making claims. So Attorney Bruce has been following it, took part in an online webinar that the League did a couple of weeks back, we, we referenced that, and today had shared with me that the League is now keeping a tally, asking different communities around the state, have you made a decision, are you opting in, are you opting out? So Jack will be here for the work session next Monday, the twenty-seventh, and we'd be looking for a decision, go or no-go that night. The deadline for responding on the DuPont litigation is December fourth, so we thought it'd be cutting a little close on the meeting of the fourth. The one for Three M, which is, is the much larger financial settlement that's proposed, has a deadline of December, I forget, eleventh or fourteenth, it's a bit further out. So, stay tuned.
I have a question. The last I heard, there really wasn't a definitive level as to what's acceptable and what's not. And my concern is that, well, first of all, are, have they told us already what the levels are that they're using?
I think if it's any, any detect is the threshold to be eligible for the settlement.
Any?
Yeah.
That's correct. We, we can only estimate what we might qualify for, ultimately, that's going to be a decision of the claims administrator appointed by the court. They may be taking into account what particular level utilities have, but it's, it's nothing that I know of as a prohibition or of participation or making a claim, that they be at a particular level. Just that testing has been done and showed the presence of PFA.
You know, because I'm concerned that, that, let's say that there's really no regulation as to what level is good, what level is bad, and I, I'm kind of floored by hearing you say that it's any PFAS. What I'm afraid of is that they would come back and tell us we have to do remediation, because they detected some, you know, PFAS, so.
That certainly is a concern, anything where you, you take a large corporation off the hook, and this is specifically as it relates to these companies' production of like aqueous foam, I think it's the firefighting foam that, you know, is no longer used, but never, forever's a long time if you take somebody, again, off the hook as a possible defendant.
It is possible to file additional claims in the future if there's been an increase in PFA levels or anything of that nature, so that is that option.
You know, because I, I, I'm just imagining that, that nothing's going to be acceptable, and we're going to be on the hook for everything, and which would be unreasonable, and I could just see them trying to really stick it to us.
Understand that it's just applicable to drinking water, and not any other PFAS contamination too, but it is certainly a serious matter that requires serious consideration.
We'll have, we'll have more of a report back a week out.
Just a sec, I, I'm pretty sure our, our water utility did have a, they did give them a level that, that they were supposed to attain, and I think we attained it by, I don't know if it was five parts per trillion, and we were like two and a half, so there was a number set for the drinking water to be tested, so.
I just wonder if they're going to abide by that, it doesn't sound like it.
I think they gotta kind of stick to the number that they created, I think that's the PFA number, so I, I don't, you know, gotta have something.
You know, and here's the thing, is that they're talking about drinking water, well, guess what? You have water that's going to be running off from, from the city that will go into rivers, the rivers go out to the lake, which is where we get our drinking water from. I, I just really think that they're setting us up, but it's not a conspiracy theory, it's just, I don't know, in my opinion, that's kind of how they work.
Large companies don't participate in, as an agenda item and the opportunity for through our discussion a week out. So, that's the extent of my report for tonight, thank you. Again, beautiful job with the decorations, there will be some lights lining the Schmidt Brothers stage shortly before, before parade night, but it's our request, that's all I have.
All right, onto number ten, which is the consent agenda. Under A, we have a presentation of minutes, there are one, it is the city council meeting of November sixth, twenty twenty-three. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt those minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, there are seven, the recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, department reports, month, year?
October of twenty twenty-three, that looks like a placeholder there.
Okay, so we're looking at October of twenty-three, we have eleven, the recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under D, finance reports of September twenty twenty-three, there are four, the recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Finally, under E, we have a noise ordinance waiver for Snow Fest twenty twenty-four for Friday, July twenty-sixth until eleven thirty PM, and July twenty-seventh until twelve AM at Nishoto Park, to waive the provisions of Sections nine dash two dash five B, two B, regarding noise audible with an enclosed structure used for residential purposes, and Section nine dash two dash five D pertaining to vibration. The recommended action is a motion to approve the noise ordinance waiver, and the recommended action for the consent agenda as a whole is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended, looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Thank you, thank you, Bill, seconded by Jeff, council discussion.
Just wanted to thank the representatives from Snow Fest for being here tonight and ready to answer questions or concerns in the event council has it, so. Likewise, of course, council will recall at the last meeting when you amended the noise ordinance for amplified sound and all that, on weekends, we now run until eleven PM, so that probably is going to eliminate some of the waivers in the future, so, but these are just half an hour and an hour over that.
Any other council discussion? Yes, Bonnie?
The thing is with that noise waiver, if, if once you start saying yes to one person, aren't you going to start saying yes to a lot more? Well, why does it have to go, I, I'm just curious, why are you asking for it to be so long?
Afraid if you want to come up to the, to the mic. I would know, I would note though, Bonnie, we've been doing, council's been doing waivers for years, albeit with a different, waiving a ten o'clock cutoff instead of eleven.
It's just what's been happening lately. Well, I mean, the thing about noise, go ahead.
Ann Brett's, twelve fifteen School Street, Two Rivers, I'm the president of Snow Fest this year. The bands that we're looking at, and the timeframes of the bands, John Stangle, who was booking the bands for us, he asked for these times. That's all I can tell you really, because we don't have them under contract yet, at least I don't think any of them are under contract yet, but just timing wise, that's what will work best for us. And it's just, you know, not a whole lot, let pass the noise ordinance that's in place now.
It's pretty common for most of the festivals within Two Rivers, that we pretty much always have a, a noise ordinance waiver, just because of other activities that are happening throughout the day, things go late, and you try to get in multiple bands, and in, in all reality, midnight's not even all that late when you, when you figure a lot of the young people that are out there having fun and so on and so forth.
Oh, so other festivals have it this late, is that what you're trying to say?
Yep, Fish Derby has one, Beach Bash has one.
I, see, I always thought they were just cut off at eleven.
Nope. Nope. The, who am I missing? I'm, I'm missing one.
Roger Street?
Roger Street, thank you, and, and Roger Street also does, so, but I think pretty much every festival, the Latino Fest, I was missing that one as well, they all had noise ordinance waivers as well. Pretty common. Any other council discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much, motion carries. Under eleven, city council formal items, we only have one. Under A, it's an authorization for acquisition of approximately a half an acre parcel with frontage on Thirteenth Street and the West Twin River, as provided for in development agreement with West River Lofts LLC, approved by city council on November sixth, twenty twenty-three, recommended action, motion to authorize the city manager to proceed with the property acquisition as recommended by the plan commission. Background on this, please.
I'd say, what is this back in front of us for? Well, last meeting, two weeks ago, when council approved the revised version of the development agreement with West River Lofts, it did specifically provide for not just an easement with the option to purchase, but for the purchase of that triangular parcel map that was in your agenda packets, this time, I'm sure looks familiar. After that meeting, I, I double-checked with the city attorney on statutory requirements, and if, if a city is acquiring a parcel of property for park use or certain other uses, definitely park use, which may very well be how this would be classified in the future for trail or park, there is a statutory requirement that the plan commission advise the council on that acquisition. So it went on last Monday's plan commission agenda, they recommend acquiring the property, so here it is back again, so we are making a clear record that the plan commission's statutory role was followed and the council acted in, in concert with that. So I would ask council members, I know there were, there were some no votes on the development agreement itself, but this is solely about the acquisition of that zero point four nine acre triangular parcel, which I think we all, with the, with the LGU letter from DNR affirming the city's eligibility for the environmental liability exemption under Wisconsin law, I would hope most, if not all of you agree, that's fundamentally a good thing, whatever you might have voted on the development agreement.
Looking for a motion on this. Thank you, Darla, seconded by Bill, thank you very much, Darla, Bill, council discussion. Yes, Bill?
It's for, for no consideration, so it's basically no, no charge. But in, in, it's addressed in the context of the development agreement, where of course the city is assisting the development, but there's not a purchase price tied to this property.
Any other discussion? See none, we will do a roll call vote, Amanda?
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimounis?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Motion carries, onto twelve for information only, Greg, got that handy?
Yeah, I think we've covered it a few times, but again, work session next Monday, it will include the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four budget, some discussion with folks from the Two Rivers Family Swim Center regarding their plans and their interest in possible city assistance, and update from CR Structures, Kip Golden, on the Confluence Project, and as I mentioned earlier, the further discussion and recommended action on the PFAS settlement. And that action could either be, again, to opt out of the settlement and reserve all rights, or to participate, and there are two separate pieces of litigation there. So as it stands right now, those are four fairly needy items for next Monday's work session.
All right, then, we're going to go into closed session. The city council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen dot eight five one E. When deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reason require a closed session. Tonight, we will discuss matters pertaining to changes for water and sewer connections for the Vanderbroe Arboretum at thirty-eight hundred Lincoln Avenue. Greg, do you expect us to have any action on this?
We'll be recommending this council take an action on reconvening in open, so if anybody wishes to stick around, we'll open the doors and notify anyone here that we're back and open.
So it is in all likelihood that we will vote on something coming back into open session on this matter, we will not be live on TV, but you're more than welcome to wait outside and come back in for that exciting vote. Looking for a motion on this. Thank you, Tracy, seconded by Peach, Tim, sorry, Tim, seconded by Tim, council discussion. See none, roll call vote.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimounis?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
All right, closed we are.